Township Precipity Troy Hills Township Council Special Meeting, June 18, 2013. Public Invited, Public Participation. Meeting called to order by myself at 7:00 PM. Please rise for a flag suit. Mr. Krefi?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Krefi?
Here.
Mr. Ferrara?
Sorry, he's not here either.
Mr. Nelson?
Present.
Mr. Stanton?
Here. Others present: Mayor Barbario, Jasmine Lim, Business Administrator, Paul Cazarelli, Assistant Business Administrator, Justin Marquette Esquire, Township Attorney, Yancy Azirmas, Township Clerk, Ruby Malcolm, CFO, Joe Facon, Township Auditor. Purposes meeting for the public hearing and adoption ordinance 2013: Colon 10, entitled Township Precipity Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey, calendar year 2013. Ordinance to exceed municipal budget appropriation limits, establish a cap bank, NJSA 48: Colon 4-45 dot 14, for the public hearing and adoption of the 2013 municipal budget. Formal action, mayor, may not be taken.
Statement of compliance. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building on June 10, 2013, where it has remained posted since that date. Illegal notice appeared in the Daily Record on June 12, 2013, and forwarded by fax to the Star Ledger and Precipity Life on June 10, 2013.
Ordinance is second read in public hearing. Ordinance 2013: Colon 10. Mr. Krefi?
Township of Precipity Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey, calendar year 2013. Ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank, NJSA 48: Colon 4-45 point 14. Above ordinance was published in its entirety in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, on May 10, 2013.
Motion by Mr. Krefi?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nelson. Roll call.
Mr. Krefi?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to open this up to the public.
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Krefi?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nelson. I'll open this up to the public. You'll be given three minutes to speak. See no one come forward. I'll entertain a motion to close to the public.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Nelson, second by Mr. Krefi. Roll call.
Mr. Krefi?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Mr. Krefi?
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title and second reading and hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that a notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in a newspaper according to law.
Motion by Mr. Krefi?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nelson. Roll call.
Mr. Krefi?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. 2013 municipal budget. Yancy?
This is the time fixed for the public hearing on the municipal budget for 2013. The budget was approved by the Township Council on May 7, 2013, and was advertised as required by law on May 24, 2013, together with notice of hearing for this time. Printed copies-- oh, I forgot to bring them out. Printed cop-- no, the resolutions there. Printed copies have been made available to the public during the past week and copies are on the table for anyone desiring one. Anyone who has not secured a copy of the budget may do so at this time.
Okay. All right, 2013 dash 126. Mr. Nelson?
Resolution of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills Township Council authorizing the municipal budget. Be read title.
Motion by Mr. Nelson, second by myself. Roll call.
Mr. Krefi?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. At this time, I'll open this up to the public. You'll be given three minutes to speak. See no one come forward?
Oh.
Okay.
Oh, do we need to-- wait, wait. Mr. President?
Yes.
I have to make the motion to open it.
Okay. Motion, open this to the public. Second. Motion by Mr. Nelson, second by Mr. Krefi. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I'll touch on the-- well, I really want some stuff about what we're going to do today. I'm going to get to the budget. You know, you're not sitting around for the work, are you? Well, I think, just like you said about Judy Silver, people would not have the opportunity to meet Ruby Malcolm, go up with her, ask her questions.
Hello?
There you go.
Darn it. Forgot where I was. But, um, yeah, but it's hard because I'm going to start to cry. I can't look at her or Joe. I want to see you cry. But, no, seriously, I mean, if people have not had the opportunity to meet Ruby as the steward of our money for many, many years, they missed out on something like I said about Judy-- Judy Silver. I said what I wanted to say before, and I'm going to start to cry. Going to miss you, Ruby, and I think the town is really going to miss you too because you have really watched over this town. The good news, you know, I say this almost every year, the way you guys do the budget, at least you lay stuff out, the school board budgets, you know, they just throw the number out there and say, "Vote." But I do want to say this, though. This year is the first time I've seen this happen. I have no problem with merit raises, just the way it was done, and it wasn't disclosed. That really irks me because any time you see one thing, it's like when you find somebody that's stealing from you in your business, ah, it's 50 bucks a week, but it's probably a lot more. Something like this with these merit raises, it shouldn't be that way. There should be documentation, by the way, that the public, because it is our money, that we could see, performance reviews or what have you. So, I know-- I know Jasmine addressed it. She said, "Next year or future years, there will be a column." And, um, what's that? Okay. And just one other thing. You know how I feel, Mayor, and Jasmine, about taking our surpluses? I kind of used the analogy last week. I think that's why Chris Christie gave you the endorsement. You guys do the same thing. You take our money that we're paying for one thing and you use it against the general budget. I think it's so wrong. I think this administration should also outline for us what we're going to be doing with all this money, with contingencies, with possible state and federal mandates or requirements, regulations. That's all I want to say, but go ahead, Mayor.
I respond on the merit raises. On March 19, when I introduced the budget, I did say there was merit increases, and it wasn't hidden. I explained it that night, that there will be merit raises and merit increases. That's number one. Number two, on the surplus, the sewer surplus, you and I have not agreed on this, and that's okay because, you know, we-- at least we disagree in a man-- you know, in a nice manner. You know, things are different, Roy, from years ago, as you know, from 2010 on. But that being said, I've talked to many people in the public, and I've told them I've done this in 2011, 2012, and 2013 now, and they don't seem to have a problem with it. And I don't have a problem doing it because the last thing I wanted to do this year was increase taxes, and that's one way that I got to bring taxes down to no tax increase and stuff like that. But we-- the practice is allowed. You know, I think it allows you 5% of the revenues that come in to the sewer treatment plant, and it's a way to give taxpayers property, tax relief. And also, we are starting-- we are actually not starting. We are starting to-- I said it twice, didn't I? We are, you know, we do-- we have a consultant who has looked at it and stuff like that, and we're going to get the sewer surplus right to where it needs to be over a course of time. So, and I always, I always, you know, respect, you know, your opinion, though, so you know.
See nobody else come forward. I'll entertain a motion to close the public. Entertain a motion--
Oh, yes, so moved.
Motion by Mr. Nelson, second by Mr. Krefi. Roll call.
Mr. Krefi?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. All right, 2013 dash 127. Mr. Nelson? Yes. Okay. Councilman Vincent Farrar has arrived at the meeting at 7:30, 5:00 PM. Actually, 7:10 PM.
Our 2013 dash 127. Resolution of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills Township Council to adopt the 2013 municipal budget.
Motion by Mr. Nelson, second by myself. Roll call.
Mr. Krefi?
As I voted for the introduction, I want it stated for the record that I do not have a problem with anything in the budget as far as the programs. I think everything that was done by the mayor as far as our services in town, keeping all of those services, I think was very good. I just have a problem with the way the merit raises were done in these economic times. So, for that reason, I'm voting no.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Mr. President, I'd like to say a few words about that also.
Yes.
Before I vote, you know, before I was elected, and even a lot of times when I'm sitting up here, I think of things in black and white, right and wrong. But this budget falls somewhere in that gray area. We're in the middle of June and we're voting to approve the budget. And like Mr. Mesmer and Councilman Krefi, I have some serious problems with the merit raises. Since 2009, I've been very vocal about using the sewer surplus and how that money is handled also. But the mayor's been very transparent about using the sewer surplus to balance the budget, and that wasn't a surprise for anything. I disagree with it, but the $550,000 is not enough, along with the merit raises, for me to vote no. It's not a perfect budget, but it's not a terrible budget. Ideally, in the perfect world, I would like to have seen things done differently, but in order for government to keep running efficiently, and also that the fact that our wonderful CFO is going to be retiring soon, I think it would create more problems if not, if I was to vote no. Therefore, I vote yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Motion passes three to one. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to open this up to the public.
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Krefi?
Second.
Second by Mr. Farrar. Open this up to the public. You'll be given five minutes to speak. See no one come forward. I'll entertain a motion to close the public.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Farrar?
Second.
Second by Mr. Krefi. Entertain a motion to adjourn?
Adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Farrar?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nelson. Roll call.
Mr. Krefi?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Okay, meeting is adjourned. 7:15. We'll be back on 7:30 PM. Township Precipity Troy Hills. Regular Township Council Meeting, June 18, 2013.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Law by filing the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building on December 10, 2012, where it has remained posted since that date. Illegal notice appeared in both the Daily Record on December 14, 2012, and the Star Ledger on December 13, 2012, and it was forwarded by fax to other local newspapers and local radio station on December 10, 2012. Note: Council meetings are videotaped and aired on cable vision, public access channel 21. At 12:00 PM on Sundays, also available for viewing at www.precipity.net.
Roll call.
Mr. Krefi?
Here.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Here.
Council President Stanton?
Here. Also present: Mayor Barbario, Jasmine Lim, Business Administrator, Paul Cazarelli, Assistant Business Administrator, Justin Marquette Esquire, Township Attorney, Yancy Azirmas, Township Clerk. Please rise for a flag salute. Mr. Farrar, if you would?
Aye. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Upcoming meetings: July 9, 2013, 7:30 PM at the Precipity Hills High School. Agenda meeting, public invited, public participation. July 16, 2013, 7:30 PM at the Precipity Hills High School. Regular meeting, public invited, public participation. Now we have the mayor's presentation. Okay.
I wanted to thank the mayor for giving me a little bit of time. My name is Annalise Catanzaro, and I'm Chair of Precipity's Municipal Alliance Committee. Earlier, actually late last year, we had a contest. For anyone that doesn't know, Municipal Alliance Committee is volunteers that prevent against alcohol and substance abuse. And last year, to help raise awareness within the senior citizen community and kind of highlight that there is, in addition to all the programs that we run in the elementary schools and middle schools and high schools, also a need within the senior population as well, we had a senior citizen art and poetry contest. And actually, I'm just going to bring it over if that's okay. We are here to honor our winner tonight, Mr. Michael Fenton. I'm just going to unveil his painting. This is the painting, and it was trying to depict influence of substance abuse, alcohol and substance abuse on your life. So, without further ado, I wanted to bring up Mr. Fenton to honor him for his really great work.
First, I'd like to thank Annalise for such a great job that you do with the Municipal Alliance Committee. Mr. Fenton, I'm going to read a certificate of recognition awarded to Michael Fenton for demonstrating great creativity and artistic prowess for his winning entry in the Precipity Municipal Alliance Committee Senior Citizen Art and Poetry Contest and for helping to raise awareness about substance abuse in our community, awarded the 18th day of June 2013. So, Mr. Fenton, congratulations and thank you.
And also, in addition to the award, there was-- sorry, I put it there-- $100 gift certificate to ShopRite in Precipity, as well as potentially lunch with the mayor.
Any McDonald's on me. No. We'll talk, and you just tell me where we'd like to go to lunch.
You want to hold up the painting and we'll take a picture?
Yes, definitely.
Thank you very much.
That's for you.
Okay, bids to be taken. June 27, 2013, 10:00 AM, pump replacement, Mount Tabor Pump Station. June 27, 2013, 11:00 AM, municipal building, electrical service entrance, upgrade project. Okay, ordinances, second read in public hearing. Ordinance 2013: Colon 11. Mr. Farrar?
In ordinance of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills in the county of Morris, New Jersey, providing for various water utility improvement for the Township of Precipity Troy Hills and appropriating $1,600,000, therefore, and providing for the insurance, issuance, I'm sorry, of $950,000 in general improvement bonds or notes of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills to finance the same. The above ordinance was published in its entirety in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, on May 20, 2013.
Motion by Mr. Farrar?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nelson. Roll call.
Mr. Krefi?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to open up this ordinance to the public.
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Krefi?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nelson. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to open this up to the public. This ordinance only, 2013: Colon 11. See no one come forward. I'll entertain a motion to close the ordinance to the public.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Nelson, second by Mr. Farrar. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Farrar?
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title and second reading and hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that the said ordinance be passed on final reading and that a notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in a newspaper according to law.
Motion by Mr. Farrar?
Second.
Second by Mr. Krefi. Roll call.
Mr. Krefi?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Ordinance 2013: Colon 12. Mr. Krefi?
In ordinance of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills in the county of Morris, New Jersey, providing for golf course and recreation utility improvements for the Township of Precipity Troy Hills and appropriating $250,000, therefore, and providing for the issuance of $237,500 in general improvement bonds or notes of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills to finance the same. The above ordinance was published in its entirety in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, on May 20, 2013.
Second. Motion by Mr. Krefi, second by Mr. Farrar. Roll call.
Mr. Krefi?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to open up this ordinance to the public. Motion by Mr. Krefi?
Second.
Second by Mr. Farrar. All in favor?
Aye.
Like to open up this motion, this motion only to the public. See no one come forward. I'll entertain a motion to close.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Farrar, second by Mr. Krefi. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Krefi?
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title and second reading and hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that a notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law.
Motion by Mr. Krefi, second by Mr. Farrar. Roll call.
Mr. Krefi?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Ordinance 2013: Colon 13. Mr. Nelson?
In ordinance of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills in the county of Morris, New Jersey, providing for various sewer utility improvements for the Township of Precipity and appropriating $4,400,000, therefore, and providing for the issuance of $3,325,000 in general improvement bonds or notes of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills to finance the same. The above ordinance was published in its entirety in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, on May 20, 2013.
Second. Motion by Mr. Nelson, second by Mr. Farrar. Roll call.
Mr. Krefi?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to open up this to the public. Motion by Mr. Krefi?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nelson. All in favor?
Aye.
Open this up to the public, this ordinance only. See no one come forward. I'll entertain a motion to close to the public.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Farrar?
Second.
Second by Mr. Krefi. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title and second reading and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that the ordinance be passed on final reading and that a notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in a newspaper according to law.
Motion by Mr. Nelson?
Second.
Second by Mr. Krefi. Roll call.
Mr. Krefi?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yancy, before I vote, Jasmine, how much money do we have in the sewer surplus right now? Approximately? Or Paula, the Director of Utilities?
We used a million for down payment on this ordinance, so I think it's about seven or eight. I think it's about seven or eight million dollars.
Okay. The purpose of maintaining the surplus is so we can pay for improvements. If we're going to keep this kind of surplus, then we don't need a bond. I'm voting no.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Motion passes three to one. Ordinance 2013: Colon 14. Mr. Farrar?
In ordinance of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills in the county of Morris, New Jersey, providing for various capital improvements for the Township of Precipity Troy Hills and the appropriating $11,733,700, therefore, and providing for the insurance of $9,624,500 in the general improvement bonds or notes of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills to finance the same. The above ordinance was published in its entirety in the Daily Record and the official newspaper of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills on May 20, 2013.
Motion by Mr. Farrar?
Second.
Second by Mr. Krefi. Roll call.
Mr. Krefi?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to open this ordinance up to the public. Motion by Mr. Krefi?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nelson. All in favor?
Aye.
Open this ordinance up to the public. See no one come forward. I'll entertain a motion to close. Motion by Mr. Krefi, second by Mr. Farrar. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Farrar?
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title and second reading and hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that a notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in a newspaper according to law.
Motion by Mr. Farrar?
Second.
Second by Mr. Krefi. Roll call.
Mr. Krefi?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Ordinance 2013: Colon 15. Mr. Krefi?
In ordinance amending Chapter 405, Vehicles and Traffic, Section 14, Parking Prohibited at All Times at Certain Streets of the Code of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey. The above ordinance was published in its entirety in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, on May 21, 2013.
Motion by Mr. Krefi?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nelson. Roll call.
Mr. Krefi?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to open this up to the public.
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Krefi?
Second.
Second by Mr. Farrar. All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, I'll open this up to the public. See no one come forward. I'll entertain a motion to close the public on this ordinance. Motion by Mr. Farrar, second by Mr. Krefi. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Farrar?
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title and second reading and hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that a notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in a newspaper according to law.
Motion by Mr. Krefi, second by Mr. Farrar. Roll call.
Mr. Krefi?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Ordinance 2013: Colon 16. Mr. Nelson?
In ordinance of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills in the county of Morris, New Jersey, establishing white collar salary ranges for 2013. The above ordinance was published in its entirety in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, on May 21, 2013.
Motion by Mr. Nelson?
Second.
Second by Mr. Krefi. Roll call.
Mr. Krefi?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to open this up to the public.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Farrar, second by Mr. Krefi. All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, I'll open up this ordinance to the public. See no one come forward. I'll entertain a motion to close this ordinance to the public.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Nelson, second by Mr. Farrar. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Nelson?
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title and second reading and a hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that the said ordinance be passed on final reading and that a notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in a newspaper according to law.
Motion by Mr. Nelson?
Second.
Second by Mr. Krefi. Roll call.
Mr. Krefi?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrara?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes. Ordinance 2013: Colon 17. Mr. Farrar?
In ordinance of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills in the county of Morris, New Jersey, establishing hourly wage ranges from the blue collar employees of the Township of Precipity Troy-- Precipity Troy Hills. Township of Precipity? Okay. In the-- the above ordinance was published in its entirety in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Precipity Troy Hills, on May 21, 2013. newspaper of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, on May 21st, 2013.
Motion by Mr. Farrar.
Second.
Second by Mr. Krefi, roll call.
Mr. Krefi.
Yes.
Mr. Farrara.
Yeah.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes, at this time I'll entertain a motion to open this up to the public.
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Krefi.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nelson, all in favor?
Aye.
At this time I'll open up this ordinance, 2013, colon 17, to the public. See no one come forward, I'll entertain a motion to close.
So, go ahead.
Motion by Mr. Krefi, second by Mr. Farrar, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Farrar.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and the hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading, and that a notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law.
Motion by Mr. Farrar.
Second.
Second by Mr. Krefi, roll call.
Mr. Krefi.
Yes.
Mr. Farrara.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes, at this time I'll entertain a motion to open this up to the public.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Nelson, second by Mr. Krefi, this is the public, you'll be given five minutes to speak, roll call.
Mr. Krefi.
Yes.
Mr. Farrara.
Yeah.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes. Okay, when you come up, please sign in your name and address.
He left.
Oh.
Give you a second to get that. Roy Mesmer, Tendrumland Drive. Tonight, ladies and gentlemen, I'm bringing to your attention a tax revenue that the Township of Parsippany and many other towns are not collecting since the inception of the Hotel Motel State Occupancy Fee enacted August 1st, 2003. This occupancy tax should be also charged on boarding homes, rooms rental, in my opinion. And I think the law is quite clear. Everybody's got their copy? If you notice on page 1 and 2, it outlines what is taxable, what is exempt, the only ones that are exempt are tax-free entities that are properly filed with the federal and state government. In the literature that I've handed out tonight, if you flip down to the first page, the section, second from the bottom, paragraph, "The occupancy fee tax is imposed on anybody living in a unit for less than 90 days." I'm not going to read you the whole sentence because I only get about five minutes, or the whole paragraph. There wasn't a lot of research on this, ladies and gentlemen. The law is quite clear. Anyone renting a room for less than 90 days is both subject to sales tax and occupancy fee tax. Which should give everybody an idea, in this room, we've been collecting somewhere in the neighborhood of $2 million, with the exception of the two years of the Great Recession. This includes bed and breakfasts, and like I said before, only ones exempt are tax-exempt institutions. Think of this. All boarding rooms in the inner cities, shore rentals, vacation areas, apartments that are renting rooms for less than 90 days. Justin, please pass this on to John so he can pass it on to the Governor. Mr. Governor, I've just balanced your budget. I've written up compliance procedures, investigation methods, and implementation procedures, which I don't have time tonight to share with you. But I am requesting that I have a private meeting with the Mayor as soon as possible to discuss this further. The paperwork I've handed out is quite clear, like I've said. We have been missing out on a large amount of revenue. To give you an idea, and I do believe that this is very conservative, I'm going to show it to the public, I usually do it on both sides, ladies and gentlemen. Boarding house tax calculation. We have about 100, we figure if we have 100 rooms and 100 homes in this town with three bedrooms, what I've been able to determine pretty much across the board, they're charging $125 a week. So that's 300 rooms, that comes to 30, I'm going to round everything off here, it leaves out 38,000 times 52 weeks, it's almost $2 million. The occupancy tax is 5%. Annual collection would be about $100,000. Note, 100 homes is less than 1% of Parsippany's living units. We have 14,000 living units. We'll be asking the Governor, and I'm serious about this, that it's be called the Mesmer's Boarding Tax. That's all I have right now, but if anybody wants to ask any questions...
Are you exempt from standing?
Um, no, I would have to pay if I was living in one of these. Does anybody have any questions?
Roy, the 100 boarding houses, is that anecdotal or what?
I've done a pretty good calculation in this town, and let me help you all out, which I know these residents and myself have not gotten a response. Just think what happened at the high school, that older woman came in, nobody's old now to me, I'm old, she said she had a boarding house. Jonathan jumped in the car with me, we went around the corner from the high school, there was a boarding house. There were hundreds, there were dozens of cars. We had those people come in off of Beverwick, they have a boarding house. Paul and I have boarding houses in Sedgfield and Glacier. And that's why I want to meet with the Mayor, and I guess with Jasmine, our housing department does not do their job. I will implement, I will, I will work with the Mayor, the administration, with this council, tell you what to do. This is very clear. We should be receiving this tax. There is no exception. Bed and breakfasts fall under this, these boarding houses should fall under this, and it's very easy to enforce. We have to get our neighbors involved. They can drop a dime, give them a phone number, not the Mayor's action line, not Jasmine's office, and not the police, and not housing, because they don't know what they're doing. And you can call all eight or nine in. I could give you examples of our housing department that would make everybody in this room throw up, their incompetence. I'm not incompetent, but I do want any, you don't have to answer me tonight, but it's just like I'm throwing something in your face, like you throw in our face, you give us something at the meeting. This is clear, ladies and gentlemen, and I'm telling you, Justin, this is a state, there's a lot of money being lost. I appreciate you following up and getting back to me, I'd rather deal with you than John any day. Okay?
Thank you, Roy.
You're welcome, and I mean that, Justin, I don't...
Just real quick with the boarding houses, they have to be registered. I mean, if they're doing it illegally, it's not going to apply to this.
Well, that's where the neighbors come in. You're in law enforcement.
And then the other thing is the 90-day rule. If somebody's boarding houses have people staying there five, six months, they don't apply.
Exactly. But we still have, from the occupancy standpoint, but you're right, but I know in my neighborhood, and Jasmine was at one of my town meetings, this person's advertising on Craigslist. It's weekly. I see the license plates, Maryland, Virginia, New York, Pennsylvania, New Jersey, they've had unregistered vehicles, and I've called up, that's the only thing the town has done right. Okay? Now, I'm not coming down on Jasmine on this. I'm just saying that I know what's got to be done here, ladies and gentlemen, I have a whole file set up on procedures, but we need the help of all of our residents. Thank you. No more questions?
Just that they have to be registered. If they're not registered, boarding house, this is basically...
No, 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 Brian, you don't get it. Brian's saying, if, just say they had a boarding house, they're not registered, I'm, I have illegal...
Then they should all be thrown out of the house, forget about the tax, they should be thrown out.
But legally, there's only a couple of two-family homes in this town. Jasmine, you remember your first year on the job with Luther, that house on Beverwick and Vale, okay? That was a boarding house with dozens of people, that's when that little two-year-old girl was naked.
I remember out in the street.
But it doesn't matter if they're registered or not, we're going to find out the ones that aren't registered.
And they have to write, yeah.
Then they have to, right. And they want to give me a hard time, I'm also going to take this to the IRS. I don't know who in the IRS right now, but I'll take it to somebody there.
Got you.
Because you know they're not picking up the income. Thank you.
Thank you. Hope the Mayor and Jasmine can sort that to me quickly.
Jasmine, this is an obvious question, this is Housing's responsibility to, to, if there was a, if a resident's complaining that there's an illegal boarding house, it would be Housing who would, who would make, who would go there or something.
I really, I don't know.
I don't know either.
I have to check the order.
Yeah, I don't know either. Thanks, Roy.
See nobody else come forward, I'll entertain a motion to close to public.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Farrar.
Second.
Second by Mr. Krefi, roll call.
Mr. Krefi.
Yes.
Mr. Farrara.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes, consent agenda, be resolved, all items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine, non-controversial by the Township Council, be approved by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on these items unless the council member so requests, which case the item be removed from the consent agenda considered in normal sequence on the agenda. Motion by myself.
Second.
Second by Mr. Krefi, roll call.
Mr. Krefi.
Yes.
Mr. Farrara.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes, consent agenda, be resolved, all items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine, non-controversial by the Township Council, be approved by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on these items unless the council member so requests, which case the item be removed from the consent agenda considered in normal sequence on the agenda. Motion by myself.
Second.
Second by Mr. Krefi, roll call.
Mr. Krefi.
Yes.
Mr. Farrara.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes, ordinances for introduction, ordinance 2013, colon 19, Mr. Krefi.
An ordinance of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills in the County of Morris, New Jersey, amending ordinance 2012, colon 29, entitled, "An Ordinance Granting Municipal Consent for the Operation of a Cable Television System Within the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, New Jersey, to CSC TKR LLC DBA Cable Vision of Morris. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title, and passed on